Good evening and welcome to the Acton Selectmen's Meeting of November 18th, 2020. We'll salute the flag.
Pardons me just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Nice to see everybody tonight. Let's see here, Town Administrator, weekly update, if you're ready.
All right. Just a few things this week. The first thing, if you saw your emails, we got the permission from the liaison because of, just because of a one-time situation going on in a very short committee. We're going to be having a Zoom rec meeting on Thursday. Looked like in the emails that there might have been a possible couple of exposures, but they're a five-member board that three attended at, so, and they're trying to put together a tree lighting in two weeks, so. It is posted, it was posted for the 10 days, the Zoom link is on the website, we've met all the requirements, but it is going to be via Zoom just to be safe until we get the, they get their results together.
How would either one of you feel about offering the Zoom again to maybe, as things seem to be getting worse with the COVID? I'm not saying they have to, but let the committees know, maybe if they need to do it that way, they can. No? Yes?
I mean, I think that if, you know, my opinion is that the boards should be making that decision, do you know what I mean? We don't want to start putting committees against, I mean, right now, knock on wood, Acton is an okay spot. I mean, if some of these, you know, we do have, and they've been verbal about it, a good half a dozen people talking about it on social media and, you know, kids, and I mean, if it turns out that we go into a positive at a local level, it may be something to consider, but right now, we're not hearing.
Okay. I was just wondering how things were going.
I guess, you know.
Pretty much right now, seeing what Janet Mills does.
Right.
You know, and if they start doing some more lockdowns.
Then we're gonna have to, you know.
Then I think we'd be forced almost to go back to doing what we were doing for a while.
But none of the committees, members or anything have said anything. I mean, as we started getting into Warren and Finance, you know, we may have to think about it depending on the side of people, but Planning Board seems to be going okay as far as I can see. No one's really said anything, the whole, it was just a one-time because of a possible exposure, not at the meeting, but, so.
Okay.
I think that if it's something you decide to do, it should be everybody, you know, across the board, so.
I was thinking the same thing before I came up tonight.
I'm just thinking.
I don't think we're too far away from going back to Zoom meetings personally.
Me either.
I don't particularly care to, this has been, this has worked out great, but the other thing is it would limit the amount of people in this building, you know, on off times. You know, there's a lot coming in during the day, and you've got it well under control as far as how people come in and the flow. Do we really need to be doing this? So.
Well, I mean.
Something just to think about, you know.
So, speaking of Zoom, the other piece of that is if you remember several months ago, when we were right at the line of having a major Planning Board public hearing, I don't recall what month it was, I got permission to increase the Zoom account level because currently we pay a flat amount for up to 100 people, and that's worked well, but knowing that we had this possible public hearing that was going to be a lot more, we had to upgrade. So we've paid that upgraded price for several months now, I'm going to go ahead and decrease it back down. We can increase it at any time.
If we had to, yeah.
At this point, as I understand with my communications with the code enforcement officer, he's still getting through reviewing and zoning and applications, so it may still be some time out, so I'll just continue to communicate with him, but we might as well save some money while we can.
And I think right now, we're back to the 50-person maximum in any given size room, so.
Right.
You know, from what, that was what, a couple of weeks ago that that came out, so we couldn't, right now, we couldn't have a, probably have a public hearing if we wanted to.
No, we definitely go back to Zoom, but the question is, would it be, would we make the 100 people, 100-person minimum with probably a basic one, or depending on the subject, it might be over 100.
Right.
Yep.
We'll cancel it for now and just make sure they have.
Yeah, we have to.
Yeah, second that.
Yep.
The Treasurer and I both attended a webinar this week for municipal law for Treasurers. It was about four hours long, something, a class that we both taken in the past, but it was a good refresher, and you'll see one of the policy, one of the new things that came out of it was a distribution warrant policy that actually has to be done yearly now, so you'll see that on the agenda, but just a refresher, but FYI that it was taken. I wanted to talk about my turkey baskets and Christmas, just for a minute, so I'm gonna take my few minutes of TV time. I still have a couple of turkey baskets available, so if you know of somebody that you think might benefit from them, remember, this isn't always about financial, sometimes it's just reminding the neighbor that lives by themselves or that has no family that somebody's thinking of them, so if you think you know somebody that might benefit from a basket, call me directly, it's all confidential. No offense, but the selectmen don't even know who they go to, they just, it's confidential. And we do that on purpose so that nobody, you know, we've all been there at some point in our lives. Same is true with Christmas, we always like to adopt a few kids for Christmas. Acton is probably the one most giving towns around, and I never have enough kids for the amount of people that want to shop and get items, so if you know a family that might, you know, use a little extra time, use a little extra help at Christmas, have them reach out to me and go for it. We got another delivery of beans today.
Of what?
Beans.
Beans, oh, you got the beans, huh?
I just cleared my throat.
Oh. We have black beans and.
Lentils.
Lentils. So if anybody wants any beans, come on in. So we need to have a conversation about masks and the transfer station, and I'm hoping that the selectmen will do a public service announcement. So masks are required by the governor's order. If, what the law says, the executive order says, is that if you have a medical condition, the municipality, and this is different than stores, so please don't compare us to Walmart because there are different laws for municipalities, but Michelle and I have been following this extremely closely, extremely close. If you have a medical reason that you cannot go into a municipal building with a mask on, we have to offer accommodations to get that person the services they need. Does not mean that we have to let them in without a mask, it means that, it may mean something as simple as you stay in your car, and I'll be the runner, and we'll get your car registered. We have to make accommodations by law. Outside now, we are also required to wear masks. When we all go to our cars after these meetings, we are required to have masks on. This isn't about whether we agree with it or we don't agree with it, as a government entity, we have to follow the government's orders. I'm bringing this up tonight because we're having a problem at the transfer station. The, we are getting, I'm getting concerns on both sides, but, and I've spoken to the superintendent, him and I spent a lot of time together today, we spent time together last week, spoke to a couple of residents, actually, last Veterans Day on the holiday from home that had some concerns. He has his, he has staff under control and now aware, I mean, there was some gray area about the whole outside thing, because it wasn't until recently that we had to have them on outside all of the time, so there was some gray area, but he is aware now that he and all of his staff have to have masks on at all times. The opposite side of that, so that piece should be taken care of, and I ask you, and I, and he knows this, to pop in occasionally, and, you know, they need to be wearing their masks, this is not optional. The flip side of it is to the residents of Acton, they have to wear a mask when they go there. We could have, without disclosure, compromised employees. Those employees, I could have a compromised employee in my office, they have rights. You as a taxpayer don't want to pay a lawsuit because we're not following through. If somebody at the transfer station gets out to take the trash out, they have to have a mask on.
Okay.
Okay? If you cannot wear a mask at the transfer station, then you need to call the superintendent, you need to schedule, you need to work out a plan with him, that's not up for me to do. He knows he has to work out a plan to get that trash disposed of, but he can't expose his employees or expose other customers, they have to be worn. It's that simple. You may see an employee in a back room in a corner eating lunch by themselves, that they're turned away, they're allowed to do that, transfer station guys may be sitting in their vehicle doing that, eating lunch without their mask on, that is allowed, but if you, you know, if somebody goes into, well, and it's, it used to be if you went into the recycling building, you had to have a mask on, but now you're not even supposed to be outside without, so if you didn't have a mask on before, they were allowing you to leave the stuff outside, when you left, the attendants would get it and sort it out, but.
Should we have some kind of sign?
There are lots of signs up there.
Okay, I didn't know if there was, you know.
So the problem now is, and where we urge for the residents' help, is that people don't always take this news real well, and some of the things that come out of their mouths when they see these signs, or when we say to them, "May I please offer you a mask?", Cheryl will attest. We're in a difficult spot, and again, this isn't about whether we agree with it or not, whether the whole pandemic is a joke, we're beyond that, we don't have the control, and I mean, my job at this point is to look out for the town, the employees, the employees' rights, the residents, the governor's orders. I mean, I could disagree with all of it, but that's irrelevant, so we have to find a way to educate and make sure that these residents are wearing a mask when they go up there. If they can't, maybe a neighbor can pick it up, if they can't, and they're just really not abusing the system, certainly one of the guys will go pop your trunk and they'll take a couple of bags out. We'll find ways, they're gonna now offer masks and individual bags, which they haven't done in the past, but we just really need to make a plea to everybody to say, you know, please understand, this is, this is not, you know, the guys at the transfer station, they're not making up these rules, it's not the selectmen, it's, you know, so. But we do have compromised employees working for the town of Acton in a variety of departments, and I am here to tell you that it is your responsibility, and your responsibility alone, to make sure that their rights are not violated. I don't know how else to say it, that's what they're telling us in our.
Kind of stuck in a rock and a hard place because all the press has to say, "I have a health condition."
That's not true anymore, though, you have, no, that's not true, though.
So we don't have to worry about that now, right?
Well, if they have a health condition, the law says that we have to make accommodations for them, make accommodations, so.
You can't just walk in without a mask.
You can't come into the building without a mask on, if you have an accommodation, that doesn't mean we're not going to service you, we're just not going to let you into the building with everybody else for possible exposure. We're still going to make sure everybody gets every service they need, whether it's here at the transfer station or anywhere else, but, you know, and these shields, I wear them at meetings because I have a hard time when I can't see the faces, and, you know what I mean? And they just make me, you know, I feel like I'm short of breath with that mask on. Somebody that has a health issue should and may be able to wear these, because they're not as, you know, so maybe we offer some of that. I don't know what all of the answers are, but I know what May Municipal is telling us, and they're seeing more and more cases on both sides, and I think, as I told one or two of you, that one of our executive sessions that we're actually bringing the Treasurer in next week is regarding.
Should we post something up about the transfer station?
It says there's numerous signs up there.
I meant like maybe on social media, because everybody, you know.
I will post something on behalf of the board.
Too, I mean, this is the law now, this isn't.
Right, and a lot of people, maybe they don't realize.
Like, down in Sanford, where Sanford, you had, they mean, so you had to wear a mask everywhere in Sanford, quite a while ago, before they went into doing this, and people are still going in because they're like, "Hey, you know, it's my constitutional right, you can't tell me what to wear, dah 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 dah." People are doing it, so then you have the problem, is what are we gonna do to, okay, I mean, do we take, have Bob take their license plate number and get their information? You know, they come in again and have someone go speak with them, you know, I mean, because,
I mean, you're definitely gonna have to follow up with it, because it's consequence.
We have to have a consequence, because there are people who just don't want to do it, so, and then.
And let's face it, I mean, 99.9% of Acton is going to wear a mask, and nobody wants, none of us want to get sick any more than the next person, I mean, and we do have a handful of people that I, you know, that I am aware of that have medical conditions, but most of the people that have a true severe medical condition, they don't want to come in this building anymore than, you know what I mean? They want me to go outside and get their car.
They really shouldn't be.
Right, they don't want to expose themselves because of that medical condition, so, you know, there's the borderline, the people that just don't want to, that are.
I think what Bob should be doing is, if someone will not do it, take their plate number and get their information and, you know, report it to us, so, and if it becomes a frequent thing, then we'll have to have someone speak to them. Because obviously, if there's somebody that's wearing a mask, because they have an issue, they probably shouldn't be in public in the first place if they're that worried about it, but we have to have some sort of consequence for it.
And you did say they're gonna have masks up there for people who, which is good, I mean, because I forget mine.
And the outdoor, I mean, the indoor/outdoor thing hasn't been that long.
Right.
So we're all trying to get used to that as well, but, so, just, it's, just need to wear masks up there, everywhere, not just there, everywhere. I mean, when we're walking into our cars now, apparently, we're supposed to still be wearing them, is how they are explaining it to us in our legal updates, unless you're understanding it differently, that's what it says, indoor or outdoor. The Road Committee has a, not Road Committee meeting, I'm sorry, November 25th, we asked for the Road Commissioners to join us at that meeting, they have both confirmed, that's the meeting where, remember, we talked about, right after the, we went from independent contractor to, or from employee to independent contractor. Michelle said there's a couple of things we needed to work out, we wanted to wait after the passing of Joe, so now, that's what we're gonna be doing, but we decided to do it at a public meeting, so it'll just be more of a roundtable with both guys, Michelle will be here, and it's really more about the workers' comp and insurance and paying it out and moving money around to make it work, so she just wants to get your blessing on a few things. So that's the 25th.
What time?
Six o'clock, we'll be at the regular meeting.
Okay.
It's hard to schedule workshops at this point because the six feet and the, you know, we might as well just do it all at once. I just wanted to let you know that the attorney reviewed the contract for the tanker, and he made a few minor changes, obviously to benefit the town, that he thought were important in regards to warranties and arbitration and the state and so forth, that anything would take place at.
It happens every time.
He does every time.
Yep.
But that's why we pay him, so he made those changes, I sent it over to Rick, Rick has sent it over to his contact to have them review it, I hope to get that signed here shortly. At the same time, the bank is working with, Ken MacSavins Bank that you awarded the bid to, is working with Burke &amp; Clegg to get the closing paperwork done for the loan, so that hopefully they happen simultaneously, and they can start building that. Last thing I have, oh, two things, you can see the projector and the new screen was installed. Electrician came in today and put the box up there.
Nice.
Planting Board, Ken did most all that work himself, looks great. And a reminder that the oldest resident celebration is Saturday at 12:30. I did speak to her, and she was just tickled pink, explained to her that it would be filmed. Make sure we got Mike Corey on that, I just got thinking that, I'm not sure if I asked him to film it, but anyways, it will be filmed, and she is handpicking the invitees. So we told her around 20 would be good, we've got a couple people from the Acton Historical Society, but for the most part, we're asking residents to plan on watching it from home after the fact, so. That's all I have.
All righty. Warrant and bills, I signed, you signed, you signed, okay, so we're all set there, so just needed approval of the agenda.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda. I'll second it.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed? All right. Minutes of the last meeting, actually, I went through them, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November, yeah, November 12th.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed? All right, so that's done, that's done. Do we have any department heads or committee chairs that want to get up and speak, or? Nope, all righty, well, moving on, old business, A, Rec Committee member update.
Yeah, so this is just a follow-up from last Friday, I told you that the Rec Committee members had their first meeting, you had appointed five people, three of them showed up, so I spent the first hour with them going over policies and purchasing and volunteering forms and getting bonded and all the Fun Town stuff, kind of got their minds thinking about, you know, the tree lighting, because that was really their focus. They didn't appoint a chair yet, they're gonna get through just the basics first and see where they go, but even if the other two show up, they're still looking for two people, so anybody interested in being on the Rec Committee, I'd love to have a couple more.
All right, B, rabies clinic.
So if you recall, it was last weekend, last week, Jim Driscoll and I spoke to about possibly having a rabies clinic, we did the same in Chapley. Unfortunately, the vet in Acton and the vet in Chapley, I just don't feel like the timing is right, and they're not interested in doing it primarily because of COVID and everything going on, so we're gonna table that until another time.
I wonder who did the one in Lebanon last weekend?
Yeah, I saw that, Kenny, yeah, I saw the name.
Maybe Jim could look into it and see who the vet was, I don't know, I just.
I think he was trying, he was trying to offer it to the local vets, you know, to reach town, but.
Yep, understandable. All right. So, so, so that's it for old business, so we'll move on to new business. A, Article 43, application.
Yep, so you got an application from Tattle Street, this was received on the 13th, it was sent over to the Road Committee and the Board of Selectmen that same date. The Road Committee has scheduled a meeting for the 30th, sound right? Does it sound right, guys?
I believe it's.
30th at, I'm gonna say 6, check the website, and they're planning on reviewing and voting on that, so I did speak to the Chairman of the Road Committee, and she'll be at your meeting on December 2nd as well, to make their recommendation and discuss with you any questions you might have, it does seem to be complete, so it's just a matter of you looking at it and reaching out to Tattle Street if you have any questions.
You know, the only thing we don't have on this application is the amount of money requested.
Yeah, I was just.
Yeah, so it's on the new one, we made that change, so they had already printed this off.
This is still one of the old ones?
Yeah, this is the last of the old one.
Okay, I thought we had talked about that.
Yep. So remember, we did that, and we did the W-9 thing.
But this has a W-9 on it, okay.
Well, no, this is the old one.
Additionally, oh, okay.
They'd already printed it, we did update the website already, so it shouldn't be too many out there.
Good.
All righty. B, policy dispersment warrants for wages and benefit policy.
So one of the things that came up at the municipal law class that we took was that this particular policy really should be done every year, or at least reviewed every year and recorded that it's been done every year. This policy was adopted, and that is a new, a new recommendation, it's not something we've missed for the last 10 years, something they're just now re-recommending. There's been no change to this from the Treasurer, but it's something that we are looking to have you sign tonight. Says this policy allows that in the event that there was only one selectman present and available to sign the payroll warrant, one selectman acting on behalf of the board may review, approve, and sign the municipal treasurer's dispersment warrants for wages and benefits only. This policy is additional to and not lieu of majority power, nothing in this policy is intended to replace the authority of the full Board of Selectmen acting by majority vote to act on the treasurer's warrant, including warrant for wages and benefits. Copies of the policy will be furnished to the municipal treasurer and municipal town clerk, chairman of the selectmen will maintain the original on file. This is the policy from 2009, it's just something that they want you to sign each year now.
Make a motion, we sign the treasurer's dispersment warranty and wages of benefits policy.
Second that.
They're moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed?
One of you have a mask, so you can sign around. So this just says that one person can sign payroll, which you do every week.
I'll sign this one and ship it down to you.
Okay, you got it, all right.
Want to say something, David?
It's in the back of our path, I didn't see it, but.
It should be, it's in the back.
I see it. So just one person needs to sign?
Everybody needs to sign.
All nice order, David. They said, "Don't look too far into the next one," because it's kind of a, it just amazes me, so it's a little of a quiz before you read the fine print for the next one.
Okay, C, propane contract.
We involve the audience, so, I'm just, I mean, I was impressed by this, and maybe, maybe I'm the only one, but, so I finally got to hold it down east, we've been talking about it, we really look at their numbers and we decide every three to five years, sometimes we go out to bid. Last year, we paid $1.49 for propane, so now you've all seen it, would you, what do you expect, what do you think that, I mean, would you expect that number to go up or down? We took all the oil off because of the gym.
I expected it to go down.
Why?
I would think.
Because oil prices have gone down.
This much?
How much did it get down?
They are giving you an offer, I just think this is low, but, $1.04 a gallon. I mean, does that seem low for propane?
Sounds good.
Huh?
That's great.
No?
Probably not for the quantity that we use.
What do we use, though?
Yeah.
All right, but we've always been at $11,000, I've just never seen a number that low. I mean, last year, $1.29 was good. We're usually around $1.50, $1.70, but, I mean, so anyways. Yeah, yeah.
Wood.
So for $1.04, I mean, I don't think, I can't imagine you want to go out and use the same company.
I wouldn't bother going out.
No, we did.
Well, last time we, last time we went out, it went up, so I think, I think this is a good price.
So, yeah, me too, I thought it was a really good price.
Yep.
So just, and we let all, I did compare the rest of it, the rest of it, it's all the same, so just need somebody on the, well, I need two signatures, but somebody to make a motion to accept it, and it's gonna go.
Make a motion, we accept the propane contract with Down East.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Do you want to sign your copy, or do you want me to do it?
Are oil prices going down just as much at home, do you guys buy your oil? Are your oil prices going down at home just as much?
I don't know, but I know I'm buying diesel fuel off-road right now for $1.59 right now, which is super cheap, so.
One good thing, I guess.
I'd say we all sign it.
Okay, yes, please.
All right, moving along, D, revenue comparison.
So the Treasurer put this together, this is FY '20, FY '21, this is as of November 18th, this is as of November of 2020 and 2021, year ending, so exactly where we were this time last year, this time this year. You can go through the numbers, you can see that motor vehicle excise is up, the building is up, marriage revenues is up, revenue sharing is up, homesteads is up, agent fees is up, certified copies are up, interest, ambulance building, recycling, some of those things are down, tree growth is down, boat excise is down a little bit, but overall, for a pandemic and for the time that we're at, we're still $31,597 above where we were last year as far as revenues.
Nice.
And we're only in November, so, that's, I mean, that's pretty good.
Better than where we thought we'd be.
Absolutely. And if we weren't back to the 50 people, we would really be recommending a special town meeting, because we have items that we need to deal with.
Yep.
But I just haven't figured out how we're gonna do that yet.
No, I think we're dead in the water on that one, for the moment.
That's just an FYI to everybody.
All right, E, we have a resignation and an opening.
I'll put them together so we could deal with them. Resignation from the Planning Board, dated November 16th, the Board of Selectmen, Acton Maine, please accept my resignation as an Acton Planning Board member effective immediately. Regards, Nathan Tabscott. Mr. Tabscott was a regular member, and he was appointed through June of 2023, so we looked at the alternates, you had two alternates on the Planning Board, they are Jim Driscoll and Frank Crunkle. Driscoll was appointed literally a week before Crunkle, Code Enforcement had no, obviously has no input, so I spoke to the board individually, to do it in a fair, unbiased way, it's whoever signed up first, because at this point, they had the same expiration, so I have a appointment created for Jim Driscoll to make him a regular Planning Board member until June 30th of 2023, which is then going to leave us an alternate spot, which is through June of 2022, which will replace Jim's alternate.
Can we accept your resignation first?
Yep. I'll make a motion, we accept the resignation of Nathan Tabscott with regret.
I'm gonna second that with regrets also.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed?
Code Enforcement had not had any conversations with him, David tried calling him, as did I, and I do not have anything further to add.
Well, we'd like to thank him for the time he did put in, and we really appreciate it. Sorry to lose him.
Gotta read that first, we got a float on it.[1766.54]
All right. Certificate of Appointment, Title 30A MR SA 2602, Selectmen's Office Municipalities of Acton, Maine. Two, James Driscoll. The Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do, in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the State of Maine, hereby appoint you as Planning Board Member within and for the Municipality of Acton until 6/30/2023, given under our hand this 18th day of November 2020.
Make a motion. We approve Jim Driscoll as a regular member of the Planning Board?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. All right. All right, looks like I need a, do I need a motion?
Do you want to do public comment first?
We can.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
All right. Do we have any public comments before we go into executive session?
Dennis, I'm beginning to imagine, uh... My understanding is, the research I've done, uh, the ordinance grade Planning Board, these are supposed to be five-year appointments. We've been all over the place for the last years, different timeframes. But when it was set up, it was set up as five-year appointments.
Okay.
Five regular members, then five alternate members. And the right bridge did not all the same time, so that you have to do it every year.
All right, so they are staggered.
That's just, uh, a few guys' information to make sure we're doing it according to what the town being voted.
Okay.
Do you know how long ago that was, Dennis?
63.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, it was when we first started, I think it was 62 or 63, when we first started the Planning Board.
Yep, so there was, and, and, I don't know if I've looked at that one, but this last time, when we pretty much started with a new bunch, we did get together with Code Enforcement Officer and reviewed the bylaws on the staggered terms, and Code Enforcement helped us pick the two, three, and four years, but I'll certainly go back and look at that date.
I, I don't think the, uh, Code Enforcement was aware of the, the ordinance.
Okay, we'll certainly take a look.
The other thing is, I watched a meeting last week, and this, the, the Board of Selectmen, twice now, have, uh, asked the Road Committee to move forward with that grant application down to West Shore Drive. We've had two fire chiefs, uh, Road Commissioner, and I don't know who else, uh, people on the Road Committee. Uh, we spent money on an engineer to help with the application.
Yep.
And I don't understand, maybe you can explain it to me. Well, if we got this grant, if the townspeople voted not to move forward with this, uh, we just send the money back. With the countless hours of work that the Road Committee's done with this, I was very disappointed, uh, at the last minute for the Board to, uh, say not to send in the application. I was wondering if you could explain the details of why that was done.
In my opinion, the primary reason was, on the application, it spelled out what the culvert was to be exactly. This wide, this long, this high, and that was on the grant application.
Yep.
So if we're awarded the grant money, that's what needs to be built.
Yep.
Now, we had 25 to 30 emails from taxpayers in town that are quite concerned with the size of that culvert. We only had five days to make up our mind on, from when we got the application to signing it to get it put in, because the, the grant window closed, I think, Sunday or Monday.
I think some of the questions that, that we had, like, are we locked down to that? Leslie did say she couldn't call them until this grant thing was over, so we couldn't even get some stuff. That was one thing, you know.
I'm disappointed that we couldn't, that we didn't apply for it, but there was too many open-ended things there that, yeah, yeah, if we had were awarded it, we'd just simply say, "No, we don't want the money." But I think we should have this stuff all designed and ready to go, knowing what we're gonna build, before we actually go after the grant money. And I didn't know that first time around, when we were, you know, told the planning, told the, uh, Road Committee to apply for the grant.
But there may not be another time, right?
We don't know.
The townspeople had that debate.
No, they haven't.
No, I said, "Couldn't they have before..."
They could have, if we had had enough time. But that's the thing. It was Monday, that application had to be submitted, because that was the end of the window for the grant.
What, what I mean is that you could apply to, to the grant.
Mm-hmm.
Then the townspeople could have had that debate, whether or not they wanted this.
Well, the problem is, the, the, on the, on the paperwork, this is what it said you had to build.
Right.
So we couldn't change that. So why go after the money if, if, if the townspeople are gonna say, "No, we don't, you know, we don't want to build that," so...
But we know there's an issue with the bridge, is my point.
There is, there is, but it's not, it's not gonna fall in, it's not gonna fall in tomorrow. We've got one or two other ones that possibly may fall in tomorrow. So I think we have a little bit of a window on this one to work with.
But it's $125,000 we could have had.
Right, and we may still be able to, we may still be able to get that.
The issue I had was the phone calls I had gotten prior to the meeting. And I had one individual that called that owns both sides of that bridge, both sides of the south side of it, and we had the homeowners for the Atlanta Butters on the other side of it. And these people were completely against expanding the bridge. So at that point, when I'm hearing lawyers, blah, 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 I was not gonna accept something to get the town of Acton into a, a crag mine, because we do not do our homework first. The first thing we should have done when the guy went and designed that bridge was to make sure that we weren't encroaching onto other people's property, where we were gonna come into eminent domain, where we were gonna have to buy property, okay? We don't know what the setbacks were, and I just felt that we were getting into a sticky situation. We were rushing it too far. Now, I understand your point, where we could have just gone and got the money, and then we could have just said, "Okay, no, we don't, we can't. We're not gonna do it." That looks bad. When you apply for stuff, then you say, "No, I don't want it now." Um, we, there's more stuff that was lined up, that we have to line up before we get to that point, Dennis. I was all for the grant, but the problem is, is when these people, these people were serious. And this, and, and, and the individual that called me from the south side of that, that bridge was dead serious, and I felt that we did not give her, as a town, at least a letter saying, "This is what we're gonna do." That was never done. So there is a process before you decide to go and alter somebody else's property, and that was not done.
Well, the, the thing is, this person has always fought the town. They own some property, decided the culvert. They've done it for, the family's done it for 50 years. Uh, and I shudder to think that if 25 to 30 people come and say that, "We don't want you doing something," I doubt very much, uh, that you're gonna go along with those 25, 30 people, uh, because that isn't that big a deal. And all the people weren't taxpayers of Acton, they're sending emails either, or also shop the residents.
Okay.
I just think that we could have got the information we needed to put it in front of the people, and that's $125,000 worth of money that we could have gotten.
I feel like there was a lot of miscommunication given to these people, too.
Put out there about this project.
Well, I don't know about the misinformation part, because it was, because it was on, it was on paper. Well, I mean, the application is what I went by, so...
The complaints that I got...
I appreciate what you're saying.
You know, and I'd love to have the money, believe me, and I'm, and if we can get this thing lined up, I'm whole seriously that they need to go out and try to find some more grant money for it, if we can, if we can do it. I mean, these things roll around fairly regularly, so, you know.
I guess my, 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 my...
We should take responsibility for the fact that we asked them to do it. It should have been our job to get ourselves in line.
But the Road Committee's responsibility, too, to make sure that everything that they were applying for was legit, and they didn't. Because, you know, you can go and apply for grants and this and that, but you gotta make sure you're allowed to do what you're doing first, and that wasn't done. And that was the only reason I thought that we had to put the brakes on, because these people were very upset. They were talking lawyers. I don't care if they fought the town for 50 years, but when they're talking about bringing their lawyers in, then we have to bring our lawyers in, then it comes sticky. If we came in with a plan first, we should have more than one plan. Okay, the complaints that I got was, "They don't want it bigger." They want it the same size as it is now. Now, was the research done saying, "Can we do the same thing we got?" Or do we have to do what the grant says, because that's what the grant's only gonna give us money for?
Right, and we couldn't get an answer for that.
Are we gonna shove this down their throat, because it's $125,000? Or maybe we can spend $50,000, just changing what we have now?
Yeah, so...
So I think it could be done.
Well, the, the Selectmen, uh, it's also your guys' obligation to...
Yep.
It is.
...go over some of this stuff.
Yep.
It is.
And what's happened.
It's a Road, it's a Road Commissioner's job to do that.
You have. We spent thousands of dollars on an engineer thing for the road bridge, and you guys wouldn't even allow a meeting with the engineer. We know what the prices were he gave. We know all that.
Mm-hmm.
Just like up at Canal, the prices it was up there. But due to some research, we found that that up there can be done a lot cheaper than we initially thought.
Mm-hmm.
And the townspeople, and this is who you represent,
Mm-hmm.
voted to have this engineer do this, and we've never...
Not with them.
...had anything with it since. We've never even had a conversation. And it's just throwing money away and time away, uh, because somebody doesn't like the idea, instead of the people making that decision, is my whole point. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Well, I, myself, I believe that the job for, the person who should be looking at what we're putting in for that bridge should be the person we elect or hire to do the roads. It's their job to, to put together a plan and come forward to the town with it.
It wasn't done.
It's not the Selectmen's job to do that. Their job is to bring it to us, and then we approve, we, we put forward to the warrant.
It wasn't done.
But, but like I just said, it's not our job to go over and, and figure out what we're gonna put up for a bridge there.
As, as Road Commissioner, you can do it either.
That wasn't my bridge.
Road.
And, and that one over there, I did work with, and if you want to speak, come up to the, the mic.
Sure.
Okay, but, um, I did do, I did do the work on that. I, you know, I'm speaking.
You didn't come to the Road, the town with the plan?
No, I helped get that forward to get the money through for the engineer. When the engineer, now, you can laugh, Dennis, okay? But when I spoke to that engineer, and I think anybody would agree, okay, that the numbers that were coming through, nobody had the money for that, okay? And we weren't getting Milton to do it, okay? They didn't have the money to do it. It was dead in the water because of the money. It wasn't because we didn't have a plan.
No, you didn't have a plan.
Okay, he gave us a plan of what we could do. He gave us two or three options, and we couldn't afford any of them.
But you did not...
Okay, so, now, listen, I'm speaking.
Hold on, guys.
Okay, and the problem we have here is, we have two, we got two bridges over there that need to be done. We're already jumping into one with Wakefield, from the sounds of it. We gotta get the town meeting first. Okay, that's a hundred and some thousand dollars we're gonna jump into. And then you're, you think that it's a great idea to jump into a grant for another $175,000 on top of that, that we'll have to jump in on, too. Uh, it was too many moving parts. And it's easy for you to sit at home and say, "Well, why aren't this getting done?" There's moving parts here. This guy's gonna do a job, this guy's gonna do a job, and this guy's gonna do a job. The problem is, if we want all this stuff, Dennis, okay, we gotta make some huge changes, okay? We can't just go on and throw a million dollars at the road bridge right now, because we...
I didn't ask you to.
What?
I didn't ask you to.
But look at the plan. I saw the plan, okay? And one of the numbers was over a million dollars for that bridge.
Right, he gave you that.
And now, I, I remember that we have a, a Road Committee ordinance, and they're supposed to be the ones working on this bridge. I don't see that getting done. I see a lot of Article 43 stuff getting done, but no bridge stuff getting done.
Are you the, who's the liaison?
What's that?
Who's the liaison?
I'm the liaison. The last meeting I went to.
So calm down, calm down. Maybe, um, maybe with the next meeting and stuff, maybe stop bringing this stuff up, because, I mean, it is things that we have to start, start working on.
But the liaison before me didn't do that.
Oh.
Okay, and the liaison before that didn't do that.
Well...
Okay.
Yeah, let's not, you know, let's, you know...
But when I, when we're saying the Selectmen aren't doing their job, okay, we, I, myself, I'm looking at it like, "We pick a major project, get it done, unless we start, wanna start allocating lots and lots of money." That bridge over there, that culvert, okay, we should have at least two plans for it. Get some numbers for it. Let's not do what we did with the town shed. Allocate the money, then put it out to bid and see where you come out. That's where, it's putting the cart before the horse. Why don't we get some prices on it first? I ain't seen those yet. I haven't seen anything except one set of plans that came from me, I think for a grant, for a stream crossing for wild animals. I haven't seen anything that would make any, would be more economical, and there's other things.
Maybe you need to, you know, like, work with the Road Committee and kind of let them know what they need to do, too. I mean, you know, kind of guide them, because, I mean, I wouldn't know, you know, what I need to do. I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, if you're the liaison, then maybe that's something you, you kind of get pushed towards.
I'm doing that.
You know, saying that's good.
But right now, the only discussion we had right now, the major discussion we've had right now was canal.
Right, and that's...
That's kind of a big deal, because they kind of threw that at us. Everybody was getting all excited, and, and, uh, we just were gonna make sure that we go through procedure.
Yep.
Okay, so with that being said, agreeing with David, that it is a responsibility of the Road Committee for these bridges. And a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Winchell spoke to the Road Commissioner and said, "I'll meet with you, and I'll go over there, and we'll go, and we'll go over the place and show you what needs to be done, and try to come up with something."
Yep.
Totally bypassing the Road Committee. That was wrong.
But, but, excuse me, I'll go, wait a minute here. The job to maintain these roads, okay, is the Road Commissioner's job, okay? That's it.
Right, so it's none of your business.
Okay, what?
So it's none of your business, then, if they're the ones that elected to do the job?
No, he, I was giving him my input on it, because I had already dealt with the bridge engineers, okay? I had dealt with all that stuff to let, on the canal bridge.
You've already dealt with the engineers.
Okay.
What was the firm?
The state engineers, okay? And the state engineer, the state engineer.
What was his name?
I can't remember. His name was three years ago, okay?
Yeah, I do know.
I don't know if you want to sit here and tic-tac on intelligence here, but I met with him, okay? And to go over the issues that we have to fix... Dennis, I'm speaking, okay? There was other issues other than the bridge that we have to take care of, okay? I was gonna meet with Adam to go over those issues, so he can put that into his list of things to do when he does the project. Okay, so when you're listening, absorb everything that I'm saying here, okay? Because there was, I'm, I'm not taking over his job. It's his job to take care of those, those bridges.
I appreciate that.
And we asked him to come up with a plan, Dennis.
100%.
Okay, he, asked him to come up with a plan. He still, we still got the Road Committee to go through, okay?
Develop.
That's why, because they're, they're not the ones out doing the work. He's the one who's gonna be doing the work.
You need to look at the definition of the ordinance.
Yep, okay, were they doing the work? Were they doing the work?
With the Road Committee, with, with the Road Committee, that's the ordinance.
With the Road Committee.
With David Winchell.
But they're not gonna go there and hold his hand to go and, and set up a plan. Now, you're telling me that...
They work together.
Oh, so they're supposed to go out there and go with him to do it?
You never understood.
No, no, because you don't understand how this works.
All right, so do we have anybody else that would like to speak?
Am I allowed to that now?
Yes, you are. Thank you.
You're allowed in the first place.
Okay.
Such lovely topic. Couple of questions.
See if we can answer them.
I'm sure you can.
Okay.
And if you can't...
We'll figure it out.
Shame on you. Uh, Sheriff's Drive.
Yes.
Is the town way?
Mm-hmm.
The town owns it?
Mm-hmm.
Who owns the culvert? The culvert was installed by who?
The state, but weren't, wasn't there paperwork that we took it over or something?
Yeah. From what I understand...
Yeah, right.
If you do some digging way back, way back, when that was originally put in.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I remember the big hurrah...
Right.
to place. Because Square Pond didn't want that to begin with. And when I say Square Pond, I mean the residents of Square Pond.
Yup.
Okay? They don't want Square Pond to turn into Mossam Lake.
That's understandable.
The amount of boats
Mm-hmm.
and traffic on there, you love the pond. And the way that the state got that boat launch, uh, when they couldn't buy any land, they basically told Square Pond, no problem, you don't want a boat launch? We won't stock Square Pond anymore.
Right.
And that shut Square Pond down. Because it said, no, 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 you can't do that. And the state says, oh, we gotta, we can. So a compromise was made. My question is, if we own the damn culvert, pardon my French, um, then, you know, obviously, it's gotta be replaced, okay? If, and I understand the, the quagmire as far as that grant was concerned, because the grant was limited, and it would not allow you to put in another steel culvert.
Right.
The misinformation that people are getting is that this, um, string crossing?
Yeah.
Okay? It's gonna be bigger. What's the size will of the current culvert that's there? Nine foot wide?
Ten.
So it's higher, the new one's shorter, I know that.
The culvert itself is round.
Right.
It's not oval, it was a round culvert.
Round, yup.
So it's either nine or ten feet.
It's ten feet, yup.
Ten, okay.
Um, the string crossing was gonna be ten foot wide, that doesn't make it bigger. Only gonna be eight foot
Right.
at the high water mark.
Actually, hold that thought for a second, wasn't, once you told it was eight by sixteen?
Sixteen, eight by sixteen.
Sixteen feet wide, what you're talking about, and I understand what you're saying.
Right, 'cause it would be down.
That, it has to be as wide as the string cross itself, and then it has to be wider than that underneath it, so the animals can walk over land to get to the other side. That's why they turn, it's sixteen feet wide.
Wide, and that's it.
I didn't hear it.
No, that, it's
That's what, that's what was in the plan.
That's what was presented to us last week.
That's where the upset, that people, they saw it coming from ten to sixteen, one.
Well, in your regard, I understand, I totally understand, you know, their reasoning.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, their reasoning is, they don't want any more boats on Square Pond.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't, I got buddies of mine that call me, I got buddies that call me, and they don't want that either, right?
I understand.
And what I tell them is, the unfortunate part about it is, is that's state-owned property. You know, the lake is state-owned, you know, they
The water.
What's that?
The water.
The wa, that's what I mean, the water. So they've got themselves an access. The, what I have an issue with is, they put their boat launch on the other side of a town culvert, and now they, and then
They have an option?
Well, no, but the thing is
They have an option, David.
But can we, can we put smaller culverts in?
Probably not.
That, I mean, will they come in and help say, hey, you know, this is benefit to us? Why don't they help out?
Don't know.
I, that, I mean, it might be something we could look into.
It's gonna be a hell of a fight, regardless, okay?
Yup.
Whether it goes with a string crossing, you know, the concrete, whatever.
It sounds like
Or whether another culvert gets put in, it's gonna be a hell of a damn fight. Again.
I, I don't think it'll be much of a, if we replaced what we've got there, and we can legally, I don't think it's a big deal.
You're gonna have to shut down West Shore Drive.
Well, yeah, obviously, you know, but I mean
That was, to me, West Shore Drive is an error to begin with.
Well, I don't know about that.
No, it should've been connected. You got another road coming in from the Shackley side, but they just built, what, three or four houses on?
They got, they got two, but the problem is, the road doesn't come through.
Right.
The road could have gone through.
It couldn't, because of the resource protection.
It's in, yeah, it's in resource protection, there's water, it's wet.
Yeah, that's why we had to have, they had to have the two houses come in off West Shore Drive, but
I mean, it's, it's just, you know, I mean, to me, it's a dead-end road.
East Shore, I mean, uh, Moon Pond Road, same thing, you know, I mean, you have a lot of dead-end roads, Peck Road, there's a lot of dead-end roads.
Not a lot of dead-end roads that have something like a big culvert, okay? And, you know, a ten-foot culvert, nine-foot culvert, it's a big culvert.
They changed it once before, I'm sure we can do it again.
When was it changed?
It was, uh, late eighties, I believe, late eighties, early nineties.
It was early nineties.
You know, a lot of people there then, and there's a lot of people there now.
There'll be a lot.
And I'm sure there's, that we could, we could come up with some sort of solution to get them around.
We'll see. Uh, another question, if, sorry. That movement committee, is that a dead issue again?
No, it's not.
I'm just asking, just asking, what did you think it was?
It was on for last week, but we hadn't met, and so I asked Jen to take it off, so I'll have it back on next week, so are we ready to go?
I don't know, are we?
I'm ready. Hopefully, we have enough people to
How many people are you, I think you may have, depending on if the board is willing to appoint one, which I'm not sure of, you may have three people.
We need five. So, anybody wanna be on the capital improvement committee? All right.
Joe, basically.
Joe? Okay, so there's four. Anybody else?
Three, four people at home, Roy's in their hands, they can't
Okay, good, so hopefully by next week, we have what we need, and we can get moving. Thank you. All right, anybody else?
Roland, um
I heard.
I was just gonna make sure you
Wait, 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 I'm gonna come back to the microphone, I don't wanna be accused of speaking from the floor, but I need to be at the microphone.
Right.
Yes.
You had mentioned to me
I know, I mentioned it to you, and I watched.
You heard, you watched, so you know we do, we still own it?
I know exactly what
We're gonna work on moving it down to the town shed.
Very good.
All right, we have a, we've got to call into the school first for, for our conversation, see if they're interested.
Yup.
I'll go from there.
Yup, thank you for bringing, bringing that up, that was just
No problem.
Sitting down there, and they'd love to move it away from where it is.
I think Harold's pretty excited about getting it out of there.
Yeah, I talked to Harold, I talked to PD, and, yeah. Um, I did winterize the gym, for those that, questioning.
And we put help, that's what we
The water shut off, the shut-off valve is under the sink in the kitchen, it's off. Do not take the little, um, bleeder off that valve, because you would think that it's on the outward side, it's not, it's on the inward side. The water comes out of that at very high force, if you take that out. Fortunately, I had a bucket handy, so we got that capped back again. But it has been drained, there is no drain on the hot water heater that's down there, it's a five-gallon hot water heater. So I removed the hot water heater with a pipe cutter, and took it outside, drained it, and it's sitting back to be put back in at a later date, and
Perfect.
Um, I did also have to cut the hose, that, it's a PVC piece of plastic pipe coming up down there to disconnect the water in the gym, to make sure that was drained, so. All easily, you know, ten bucks with the pots, we're back in business again, so. The toilet and the sink has been winterized with antifreeze, non-toxic antifreeze, so.
Well, thank you for doing that.
Now that's drained and done, so.
Much appreciated.
Yes, definitely. Anybody else have anything to say? All right, so, I guess I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion, we go to executive session, personnel issue four oh five six A dash one at seven oh one.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed?
What a pleasure, if you've got a question, I'll answer it.
Would you have a job to give that to?
Tomorrow, empty out, that's real
Are you alive or
I don't know, I don't know, I give the
Yeah, you got a regular coin, yourself.
Takes up a lot of space, I'll say.
I don't see how many gallons I can go.
Is it one?
Can you take one?
It's the other day, so far.
It's my, I can show it back, I can pull that pack up, it's better there.
Six, five, two, two.
Talking solid, it's very close, so long.
Yeah.
About five, five, eight, five, two, two.
I'm gonna say also, yeah, big gap, you're actually, the other man, stuff that I really need, and
I think I mean
Hopefully, it won't
What did they do on the, on the track?
Yeah.
So, I don't know, you know, like, do you have a
Um, I don't worry about chasing
What do you listen to, like?
Yeah.
I probably got it, I didn't ask.
I think
Yeah, yeah, my brother's, yeah, we got different feelings, I
The wire on that, on that one, just not awesome, boy. I want that, even though I'm watching, I'm one of these, I don't know, it's exactly
Oh, yeah, we came, I don't do it, I said, can't. And if they really kind of, doesn't take time, you know, what they can do with the land. Oh, oh, I, we get seven blocks.
First place that, that trend?
And that's, I've been a
Well, right, right.
No, it's all the way, yeah, it's, you know, it's like, for your basic rights, one, and so
Yeah.
But, you know, it's not
You got all these little members on the board, there's nothing against the members, it's just, you don't know
It's gonna stir that up.
Question.
Well, my, my duty with Kenny is, is it kinda like your group, we're about, we're like an authority, that It's a half a lot, they told him, it's all thing, with this, with this guy, I was like, oh, I
Everything was fine, the safety, I guess, and then they got around the corner, was done for it.
And so they changed the, so he's telling me
They were, yeah, I'm just saying, they said, I don't think, it was like, uh
All, all, they had a, you know, and they say, who was it?
I don't understand, I don't know where they come off the city.
Well, 'cause you got, they got, well, they, they, you know, they, they
When you expect work, we, you know, six years, you're on, man. The town already has an east on both sides of the way, of the territory, but
Yeah.
I mean, they, 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 all the way, millions, they have all the time on that way. And what they've done to the three hundred fifty
I know, they, they, I don't know.
It's absolutely disgusting.
I don't really know what the town, other than, that, remember, my apartment, you know, the old place, you know?
Yeah.
But they're not
You said, you know, like, on, at the big, at the
Yeah. Well, it was just a play, no, but
Yeah.
And it was all same, yeah.
And then, now, it's way out The other term?
Oh, yeah, I know, I did that.
Puck's foot?
I never wanted that.
Well, what they are now, Joe, is they're all the way out on Beautiful, like, they're proud down there, you can see them, they're on
Yeah.
They're going up to the valley.
Oh, yeah.
And, and, and they, they all went down, it's a simple trip.
Yeah.
And they cut all up.
They have a square, all right, sixty
And, so what you can end up with?
Roof, yeah, roof.
Is five million on the ground. And a piece of waste?
What?
Hundred one.
Well
No, no, this water, no. What are you gonna do?
It's like a hundred, twenty-five. Well, with me, I, I was, I was, I was, I was, that, well, a lot
No, I appreciate that, but you're not, it don't matter, it's four hundred acres. Yeah. The town owns When you haul the whole mountain And the town is stupid, 'cause they own the culvert now, too. How's that, then? 'Cause they, they told the state, forget it, it's an out, it's
Well, I think the same with your, the above, that's, that's the whole thing.
And how's that?
What is your town? You know, the biggest thing now, I got the roads, all right, and the roads, I, you know, get it by a pond, you know? Is that, is this, is this, I think, governor, like, that You're gonna, you know, you're gonna fix that, you're gonna guarantee me
Whether you, right, down there, saying, is everything, oh, yeah, it's, it's more town, you're
Yes.
Yeah.
Big difference.
So, if the town invested in getting these trucks converted, how long it take for the town to recoup their money?
Like all years.
That's seven thousand dollars a truck?
Twenty-seven, fourteen.
Okay, uh, we'll go on three five years.
Three after one.
But let's say, just say it is five years. You're gonna basically do away with the sand.
No. So I'm the sand in there.
What we're supposed to do away with the sand?
See, that's the fine line, you know, if we get a ride yet, you know, that's.
I'm, I'm asking, well, I'm not.
Personally, myself, no, I wouldn't get rid of the sand. Should be right over there. I think that, that guy said the tree, we should try to pre-speak, pre-treat them. We don't want to attend, you know, that stuff. And what do you say, with the seventy bucks over the top, or seventy bucks down?
Yeah, it's like fifteen dollars more time.
More time, yeah.
And he says, if you don't want to convert it, you know, we can't get.
You can get the pre-treated salt instead of putting the liquid on it.
But couldn't you, what research I've done, couldn't you take a load on one of your guys' trucks?
Mm-hmm.
And push your calibration until you're supposed to develop.
Yep.
Couldn't you just about go the hills on your end of town one load?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I did, last year, I put a lot on my father's truck that he bought, and so I gave two inches.
Yeah.
And I did all of the new small road, West Road Drive, Nason Road, and I did, uh, the H Road, the Max Road, and Vanmore, and I did nine, and I built a loud street, not another street, everything.
Right, but you wouldn't have to pre-treat everything, like by the hand and pasture, or go down by, um, the flat pile of the hop, or you wouldn't have to pre-treat all that, you could.
Could.
But if, 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 if you were being conservative, just to see, like with this new stuff you're talking about, and you just mounted the problem areas, like the hills and stuff.
Uh, I'd just be curious to see what the pre-treat stuff would do, you know, by the dump, uh, by wrong and how much over there.
Yeah, well, I don't care about the wrong and tops. That's not great.
That's it.
Oh, no, 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 I didn't try that originally.
That's on, that's on him, okay?
The whole, when he's got now sand.
That's his problem.
Yeah, that's it.
No, I mean, I, I, I think I do, I, I go down into the day, the girl said that, she could have sent me a couple of, I don't know, I don't even need one. I, I think, I like, you get a full load, just short target.
I, I'm not disagreeing with you, well, but I still don't think the York's all this wet system out. I, I just.
I mean, we're all afraid, I mean, I, I saw the difference because when I'd be lazy and not put it in, we're just hassling it out, you can see the salt just go.
All over the place.
All over, but you put it down, you can see it. I, when my spinner motor broke in my truck, I lose spinner motor in my truck, and then went, what's going with it? Just falling out, it worked on it.
Yeah.
Cause you guys, I was just going that way, cause lots of times they run down the bed with the fuel tanks.
I could tell you something, somebody's a lot smarter than me, you can imagine that. His name is John Wilson. And what he did was a beaters, cause he didn't like what you're talking about right there. Stuck one.
Hmm.
He took, and I put for those beaters fourteen, sixteen inches or something.
Dollars, man?
It's better.
Yeah, about fourteen, sixteen pounds.
Okay, he took, he took, and he made it, a twelve wing, took the torch and cut it off, so put it so, so far.
Well, you're sure they must have been metal back in the day.
Of course.
Yeah, yeah. No, I heard now.
Made out of just like me, dude.
Yes.
Steel.
They're in the metal.
A lot of metal.
Plastic metal.
Well, if you're down it, like they do take the salt off or something, I mean, uh, Sabrezar or something.
The goal is just to keep the spinning out, that's all, which is, it's all done.
Yeah.
I keep mine.
Well, back then, you couldn't control a speed.
But you can't, unless you get out of.
Unless you get out of the truck.
Right.
And I.
Yeah, cause everything is fast now.
You know what I mean? It's either sand in or oil.
What else, scientific, like life? If, when I'm blockin', I mean, I'm the ally, I told God, he told us, cause you're doing one twenty miles an hour, well?
Yeah.
I do only ten fifteen, and I'm done when I'm in the middle of the road, you know?
But the problem is, I mean, it's just a scientific fact. If you pre-treat it with a wet system, it's gonna say that.
Yep.
Okay, and it's gonna.
It's gonna work longer.
It's gonna work longer, and if you do it this way, you're plowing thirty percent of it off the road when it comes to with your block. Because that salt hasn't all dissolved. I would use salt, I would use any salt, it was up to me.
I brought a little straight sand.
No.
No, no.
I would use straight calcium. It works to zero. It works to zero degrees.
Yeah, that's why we all pre-treated, but the thing is, you gotta use liq, if you use liquid, you have to put salt over it. But the fact is.
You can't calcium.
Magnesium, calcium, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
The problem is, is it's slippery.
But it's slippery.
Yes, because I remember four, five years ago, we all went out, we had a tanker truck, oh, pre-treating everything, say true words or call. Right, no, oh, yeah.
Well, that pre-treated.
They were pre-treated, but they didn't, the salt truck ran out, in front of the tanker truck, there was lack of communication.
Yeah.
Salt truck wasn't behind them. Now, they don't put a lot down, just put it down, and that way it keeps.
But you get that, that pre-treating down, you take, like, one winter was in the road, I mean, my wife keep on the way, fifty-six, eighty inches of stone on the hard road. And, I mean, she's a pretty good driver, although, all-wheel drive, and she went off the road twice, going up there. Cause everything's still being slippery.
Right, that's what he said, all the pre-treat, you know, and you go off, like, you, you go for nothing, that, you know, Brian, like, just stay on it.
Yeah.
He said, the pre-treat, plow, 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 goes and salt, you do it on there.
You gotta, you gotta inspire when you plow.
Mm-hmm.
That's the bottom line.
Everybody, everybody's never liked doing that, is if people get rid of luck, so you usually duck down and see, but don't act like anything's ever. So what happened with the state on the one oh nine, is they, they put the salt down, and there are times, like, I get out of the Sunday paper, I won't, I'll go to movies because it's, 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 you, I don't know, ask Pat Stevens, Pat Stevens used to have the sand one oh nine, the state guy asked him, sand one oh nine, so can you get around the corner by church there? Uh, and it's, the problem with salt is it varies from one elevation to another, it melts, freezes.
Which side of the hill is salt?
And which side of the hill, I mean, we, Dallas and I have called both sides of the town, and it's, you know, what's happening up in that ridge isn't happening in that.
Oh, yeah, already seeing that quickly, one on one.
You know, and it's, and it's the temperature, you know?
What do you mean, you got six inches of snow up there, what are you gonna play?
And then there, there are times that you, you, you put the salt in a temperature twenty-four, up to twenty-four degrees, you know, in color, it doesn't work. So you need sand, you start skidding on these hills, you just a little bit of sand, it really helps, but you, but you got ice, and you're just, you're just going wherever the cars can bring it, that, that's the whole thing.
Well, that's what the whole, this whole mixing it with brings it down the freezing level for work.
Yeah.
Longer span now, cause before we had liquid on our trucks, all we dealt with on the highway was pack, pack, pack.
Yeah.
Pack. Once we started putting that, mixing it with salt, I haven't seen pack in six, seven years.
Yeah. Well, it worked.
Yeah, but that's, 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 pre-application is, it's ideal and sounds good, but it, it should be varied from one situation to the other, you know, one type to the other.
Oh, the idiosyncrasms.
Kind of like people got this, oh, I'm gonna go, this, this is gonna help them then do it, they don't realize, you go around the corner and things are kind of different. And we come from a generation where you, the truck went real slow, like you had, you know, everything changed from up the hill, down the hill, whatever. You know, a long time you go off the road, and how many times?
Potato.
Went up to the other ridge, but around, go halfway up, hit a black guy, just, just like that, just turn around, this is fast as I did.
Oh, yeah, no, I think, oh, yeah.
And then you go and actually move, and move depending on what you weather, dude, gets mad, you go back up the hill, and make way for the, you can't really, oh, hell, what's gonna happen? They tell you that what did happen.
No, we had a great time, thirty years.
Yeah, when I'm saying they did nothing, and it's.
All the boys got some birds.
Some certainly was.
Then Brian, Brian, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Brian saw, he was my first.
The salt getting too, too strange, and then starting to eat one of the wells, and then filling it with something, the trees on the side. Now, it's, well, I mean, you make this river, it's, it's stuck.
I don't, I don't know.
And the salt, once you get salt into the water system.
But Brian saw, always hear that wall from you still get.
Salt was not the answer, it's a tool.
Sand's not the answer either, the sand's.
Like Brian.
It's the man that's.
Hey, I think my, my brother's get on sand, and.
But I had a great time, I had a great time, I haven't gone away anyway in twenty-five years.
I want to look, they have, they have, yes, they have.
Flap, yeah, flapping down.
And they pre-treated.
But I had it, I ain't said nothing.
Perfect job, it was a perfect job, and I was scared, you know, like you buy my watching, and, but, well.
Say stuff tonight.
I was scared, it was all aside, these logging trucks, the roof, it's happened to me a few months, I did salt.
I can fix it.
Yeah, I didn't know when to go back, and I was a little child, I made two months, I go back, you know, but they did it wrong, I was out, and it wasn't really a lot, so, no, you don't think, but that was nothing. I'm there, and it's cold, it's thirty-one degrees.
Fifty years ago.
But we've been going back and forth with salt, sand, salt, they were, they didn't use the salt, we had firehouse. And I said, well, this is, he uses too much salt, and then, and then he's a little fighter, huh, he doesn't wanna sweep the sand, you know, get trucks going back and forth, that's who looks at salt, go on concrete, you know?
They, he did, New Forest did a whole piece of property that, and what you also used to do is.
This is what you done with the town, you know, and it's like.
One small boats, well, they're hot, on the other side of the road, about the reservation.
You know, it's, it's like.
Constantly, constantly calling service.
It's like a dam, the dam holds the canal, I say, my request.
Woodstock and his family that lives in California.
There are times that I almost felt, bringing crushed gravel on some of those holes, and David can do, and then.
It's the same story, it's just fifty years later.
So they look like, they don't have the. I don't know what you put down there.
Other woods there?
Whatever.
They don't want.
Problem is, the water comes down, it settles, I mean, oh, sometimes we can break through with that, side, draining out of there, or.
And see, Brian's gonna do that, have to let us.
Well, it's, the government, the plan is to put a bridge over the ridge.
Around the backside of the back, I'll wish for that.
And then redesign all the drainage and get it in some.
It's a way to do it, I think, place it there, and I would think.
Permanent. Permanent bridge over, because that's it, start ridge, you can't.
So you can't do that.
Cause they don't.
You know, he can do it.
So it's a, it's a new style composite bridge.
But.
Okay, it's gonna be wider, why?
Uh, it's gonna be, I think, the same width.
Yeah.
You'll be able to run the track a little bit more, I think, yeah.
So they went, the next day?
Yeah.
That, I mean, a lot of people have a road, I mean, that's where you know.
Oh, whatever, it's, well, posted for six dollars right now.
I know, but there's something happens.
Yeah, afterwards, I mean, they're pretty, I don't know, but it's basically maybe the same for.
I mean, to me, at town, to me, it's.
They made the word, the problem, what?
And they did nothing about it. Uh, you know, I see, a few of years, sometimes.
That wasn't it, if you don't, where does the legal, call up and you tell them, exactly, this is what I always say now, I told you this, we told you this before.
Did we talk this off, it's like, you know, it's a common question, same thing, it's like, you don't have to get a compensation, you know, it's a old question, but it's built for the. That's intentional, I mean, this.
If you, if you want to do it, you can now, I can do the same.
So, uh, well, hopefully they'll get this stuff done.
Yeah, I mean, I've talked to Wakefield, been over there, talked to a couple towns about it.
Who was that?
Uh, Selectman, the Dr. Selectman, young, uh, Brock, uh, we shared the highway part.
So what's, what's, are they paying for, are we paying for?
Whatever.
You got how many?
Brother. Uh, one ten each.
Yeah.
So it's just a matter of getting town meeting, getting, you know, I still got some labor to do first.
That's absolutely.
Now, you're on, you're on, how do you feel about the road, Chris?
I, I don't know my bottom, but just got into this, so.
We budgeted, eh, eh, no.
Taking one version of time right now.
But that's just my, if there was a way out of that. Oh, yeah, oh, the other thing, you know, we're in the essence of stories, you know, you know, this is my job, you know, we're, one of nine, and you're, you're true, coming in.
Yeah.
Exactly. Well, I also can drive through it every day. Right, well, the thing is, somebody is standing, talking, they even saw, um, there's a structure.
They did, what, they told.
For drainage.
And it's a wall?
Yes, and it's, mostly, there's no access. So, whoever's locked out, teed in, and back in the day, I think, it was up before.
Okay, like twenty hall, hall, can I get, really, I get.
Thirty people. It's too big, but you can't say.
Just send the meals up there. Other than, you want, you want, is he gonna leave?
I can come up, one line, take a left, and it's like.
We say, John, you want that?
It's not, technically, illegal, it's actually, outside, but it's, I think, needs to shut down, and figure out what's going on underneath, and then restart those culverts.
Maybe what you're saying, that's two culverts, is like, oh, so I could.
My understanding, my experience, her, they told Joyce, this is three culverts going through a structure.
When you say the structure.
Like with concrete structure?
You mean a double spot?
So, or.
Another one, it was like, yeah, we do call the, uh.
It was like a diverter, it's like sending water, it's roaming now.
So it's probably flooded, I guess, something.
Mostly, right. But like, I feel probably, it's kind of bottled in there.
No, I see, yeah, I see, I remember that. Uh, would it be to any advance to, that's what I'm going to, possibly, would you share that?
Nobody's missing, they go, they're, they're, they're. Yeah, well, I mean, you do, you can do a temporary, and just have a shim it, and get it to the water, and stay there, and it seems like it's, it's, it's.
Put in the, have a discussion, you just end up there, we don't, we don't.
Yeah, well.
Hasn't passed, he's not number five.
I don't know what else is going on, I don't know.
The state doesn't.
I drive a lot every day, you know?
He can say, really, yeah.
I mean, I'm telling you.
State has my point, water.
I don't know what's happening, I don't know, but the capital, capital, I don't know.
American people, every piece of water in the country.
You know, that's what state does, I mean, I think it wants to down.
Yeah, Joe, I, I don't want them guys all on their pit, we're in my own road. Well, I said, well.
Well, you know, but actually, Richard.
Yeah, don't bring that, Adam, tell him to sit down, that'd be.
It's not a pit, it's just the bank and crap, people are playing one of their things.
It's a lot, you got a house lot, it's a lot.
Oh, I'll show you, I'll show you, I'll dig it out, you know, here, make a mess, you know? It's one, if we, if we soak it, and we're, and, I know, that was the one.
Well, it's good, they're in there today.
They're in there, yeah, they're in there, I don't know, they come and go, you know, you know.
I don't, they find it.
Johnny, you're working? No.
I don't know, man, he was, I don't know, he was.
I, I, I always talk to Mike, I, every time I call him.
His what?
The guy's a man, like, I asked the guy, I always talk to him.
Well, the guy running the loader, the kid, he hear of it.
Oh, I don't know.
So, who are you talking to?
Well, not like, 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 when we fill up, pop in some of the kids, or I didn't want them on the road, but I always talk, I like when we close the roads, I always call that.
Mike.
Mike.
Oh, yeah.
And I tell him, he's a good guy, he's a.
That's definitely something, that's definitely something, and the kid running the loader is, is Mike's son.
Yeah.
It's like four generations.
Yeah.
No, but they, but they were different out there the other day, Alki was in there, I don't know about Joe, they were getting one another. I was talking to a guy that I went to try auctions, and he said, he just, somebody said, I don't know what it is, one of the events, one day they'll call up at five o'clock, and they're going to act, and they're going to be, well, really? Red, who came over, T A eighty, a year and a half, hoping to go out there, Fisher, also in the long run.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, Jesus.
He's on the one, do you know the dealership, if we, I don't have two seconds to drive it out there, they just have to drive it.
Yep.
It's all it is.
Yeah, well, he, he's, you're talking about the little, the old one.
Yeah, that, that, right.
Yeah, he, he speaks, he's, he's.
And that girl that drives the black one, she used to have her own truck.
Yeah.
She owned a whole, and all that.
No, but they're people, the local people, you know, or some of these others, the guy next door.
Tom, you don't like Tom?
Sometimes, I, I don't talk to him.
Yeah, what about Bernie, Bernie's young.
Bernie's young, I mean, you know, I think Bernie, Bernie likes to be, you know, feel those toys, and he's just.
Robert Jam, June's pretty young.
I don't know, who's Kimber?
June's guy's always usually up there with him.
Yeah.
We bought a sander, the last two years.
Oh, did you get it this year?
Yeah, you just don't want them to visit, I don't know.
Yeah.
Ten dollars and five cents, eleven, you can't.
And then, and then you rock, it's a good rock, no, last year though, it was a good rock.
No, there's nothing.
Unless you were throwing them off the back of your truck.
No, that, that last year's semi-plow, well, that last year's semi-plow, we got some rock outside, and there was a water rock in that.
Really?
Oh, yeah, a water rock.
All right, well, I don't know who's sanding it.
Then, but the pasture, you guys, that's good sand, a lot of it.
Yeah, the crushed gravel, like, um.
Are you like that one?
The pack, it was really good.
No, that's something, in the first few years, that, that's like a little.
He doesn't like the sand for crushed gravel, and no one's got the sand, very, very.
No, that, that country, I don't know, but, yeah, that's.
That's like, you probably really packed it, well, really good.
Well, the only thing with it is, it's like weird, like, sometimes we'll try to grab a lot of there, we won't, because that F I's, you buy it for ninety fifty a yard, and they make that concrete, and they lock over the.
So the vines, they're.
Oh, it's, it's something like, oh, my, you put that down, you're rolling, that ain't coming out, but it's, but it's cheaper for me to go to F I's and haul out that lumber, and we, and haul two, three hundred yards than it is five, eight, because most fifteen, twenty thousand.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you cheat, there ain't no doubt about that.
But tiny, 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 some of the stuff they make, it's all done to fix it.
What time to get it?
Dude, cause that guy, when we throw in the sand that morning, it's like, it's down five trails, and you walk down one, and blow, and you go back down.
What time to get it?
Jen's thing, just up there for a lot.
Yeah.
Look, Joe's up riding around, looking for.
No, no, Joe's up there with a push truck, and the rocks are all over his property, and so then people say, oh, wow, what all the rocks they dropped? I said, you drop them there, I said, don't end drop. You ever see the trails? Like, you must go over my knife, but.
No, I, I bet you go up there a couple, I've talked to Tom, there's one time, I swear to God, we got a hole shoot, or something was open on the trail.
Oh, yeah.
He jumped, I had that burning up, and I scraped it out of the road, and he goes, I said, the guy reached his grab, and he watched, and it's all against me, all of it.
No, no, but they learn nice, so they don't really see, I don't know.
It was, he's only one or two times, and, I mean, Tom, Tom's good, I mean, he treats us good with the stuff in the town, he's, it's like, when we're working, I tell you, why am I gonna go past there and go to Barnes, or to Rudy's, why not just go there, you know, that's, you know? People see you flying around, using several.
He's got a portable, two portable pressures, man.
Yeah, he's got two big pressures, and they got that big, they got that screen in, and they got that column in there.
The problem, yeah, that's a nice thing, cause that's, you know what it is, remember like a putty stand, they got those little rocks, and they separate, that's what they, you know?
Yeah, the rocks in there, so it's.
Yeah, that's, and, uh, cleans it, you know?
Yeah, cleans it, that, that sand is good stuff.
Well, it's a different sand than, say, what, dirt, dirt is like the best sand.
I remember when I, when I was a kid, we used to go inside, and my dad, my dad always took that, you saw him outside of there.
You know what the town did to dirt?
Cause didn't you have the yellow trucks, and the big beacon on the side, and they rotate, right?
Who's that?
Dirk.
Whatever you're talking, the air still?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, like, yeah.
Yeah, the big, big ones, yeah, the only thing I can only really remember, and all.
But you know what the town did to it, they did one thousand yards.
Yeah.
Of, uh, four inch crush, his crush over throw, it is having his motor, he taking it up north, he had to rebuild the motor. So town wanted it, so he hired Tommy Shag, he didn't mean to crush it, this is Tommy first bought that random crusher he had, that remote throw, and that, he did like a four foot rock over there. So he hired Tommy, he said, crush it. He gets it all done. Well, two weeks later, he said, no, we don't want it.
I can't find these, that sounds. Are you talking about the, the, the?
Yeah. Yeah. Put the nails in from the top and bend them over.
Alrighty, I'm looking for a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we come out of executive session, at whatever time it is, seven thirty-five.
I'll second that.
They're moved and seconded, all in favor, all opposed?
Um, Madam Chair, I have one item that I did not put on the agenda that I was hoping to speak with you guys about.
Okay.
It is the personnel policy.
Alright.
So, I'm gonna ask you to make an exception for the day after Thanksgiving and Christmas Eve this year, and I'm gonna explain to you why and kind of where it stands. Per Ed's instruction, a couple of weeks back, oh, yeah, last week, we, I went around and asked the employees what they wanted to do with New Year's Eve, we had a lot of conversation. Um, we decided the town hall would be open on New Year's Eve, uh, we're open until eight, if it's slow, you know, I'll sneak them out a little early. Um, but New Year's Eve, everybody's in agreements that, that we should be able to work and be open. The conversation did go to the day after Thanksgiving and Christmas. Um, as you know, the board changed it, that, um, it is an unpaid holiday and we use PTO. We have checked with surrounding towns, some towns don't get paid for those days at all, some towns get paid for both. Um, there was the talk about, you know, hourly's getting all that COVID time paid, salary, people still work, so that was one little thing. And you guys eventually made the decision that you made, I don't disagree with the decision you made, I think that it was the right decision, and I think that makes it fair across the board, however, in listening to some of the employees, they have some valid points that I'm gonna bring to your attention, and it will be my recommendation that just for Thanksgiving and Christmas, that you waive it, and we reevaluate it, um, next year. Because of the pandemic, we did not put in for increases for any, anybody, not salary, not hourly, no town staff got an increase. Um, because of insurance increases, the amount that the town contributes to, um, our health insurance plans was lowered, because we only had so much money to spend on insurance, so instead of the town covering X amount, they now cover a lesser amount, so the weekly deductions in everybody's pay went higher, we now pay more towards our health insurance. So between no increase and paying more to the health insurance, um, and sitting down and calculating out that some of these, you know, if we close those two days, based on the current rate of earning PTO time, it can take an employee up to eight weeks to earn enough time to cover those two days. Normally, if the other pieces were in place, then I, you know, might think differently, I just really need more time, it's, it's, it's emotional and close to the heart with some employees, so I'm gonna ask you, the money's already budgeted, not an extra expense, to allow us to pay the day after Thanksgiving and Christmas Eve, and just reevaluate everything, stay open to New Year's Eve, and reevaluate it next year. And times are hopefully better, that is my request to you.
What do you guys think?
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean.
When we originally made the decision to do that, it was tough, because, you know, most people don't work on Fridays after Thanksgiving.
Right.
And, uh, but, you know, you look at the PTO and this and that, but I didn't realize it was other holidays, I, I just didn't put two and two together, the other holidays, I might, and, and, and it's budgeted, it's not, you know, to me, it's almost like a bonus to them.
Yeah.
Uh, I think it's probably a good idea that we, we reevaluate this after January first.
Well, and again, like, without the increase and everything, I mean, current, you know, means, most, everybody's hourly rate with the increase of insurance and no three percent, we've dropped in hourly rates, so we're no longer making what we were making, which is, you know, and, and, and many will tell us from the, in, in, Cheryl included, some of the conversations that were had, I mean, actually has very good benefits at the same time, and that continues to come up, and we appreciate that.
Good.
Um, so, you know, it's kind of, I mean, it was finding a balance, we have to find a balance between hourly and salary, and I just, before the holidays and sitting down and calculating it out, I just don't think it's the time to, to do it with everything else going on, um, I mean, again, it doesn't affect me either way, I'm the one that loses time each week, most of your, I mean, each year, most of your salary employees do.
Right.
Um, but I think that it's a little thing that we can do for hourly staff.
We have, we have exceptional employees all the way around, so, yeah, no, I think it's definitely the right thing to do, so, I'll make a motion that we, how do we word it, that we waive the, that we just.
Pay regular hours for scheduled employees that were.
Pay regular hours for the, yeah, hourly employees for the day after Thanksgiving and the day before Christmas.